I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, School Committee to Order. Would everybody please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Lancia, roll call.
Veronica Bates.
Present.
Stephen Berry.
Present.
Odilia Harmon.
Present.
Norine Poitras.
Here.
Mike Popovich.
Present.
Vice Chair Suzanne Joyce.
Here.
Chair James Violet.
Here.
Student Gracia Baretti.
Here.
Student Chance Gagni.
Here.
Thank you. We do have some adjustments to the agenda. Dr. Lancia will explain some hirings and some changes in his superintendent's report. We're going to add under new business 12.1.4, a guidance counselor at Westbrook High School for the replacement of Rachel Hasty who resigned. And then 12.1.5, an adult ed tech education coordinator. Again, a one-year position that's going to be paid through a grant. So that's 12.1.4 and 12.1.5. You have your packets, the minutes of the August 8th meeting in your packets. If there's no objections, we'll let the minutes stand as presented. You have communications in your packet. And before we go to student council reports, I guess I'd like to turn it over to Kelly and make an announcement, please.
It is my pleasure to present to the school committee tonight a young lady who is just remarkable as a student and as a human being, Ms. Gracia Baretti, has joined the school committee as one of our two student representatives, joining Chance. Gracia is a junior here at Westbrook High School, is very actively involved and is has an unbelievable course load, but is really interested in pursuing academics and international studies. She has her eyes set on Howard in a couple of years, and so we're super excited to have her join us. She's also very involved in social activism and has had some really pretty amazing experiences here at Westbrook High School already, including an overseas trip over the summer. So I think she'll bring a really nice perspective and some great student voice to our committee. So welcome, Gracia.
Thank you, Kelly. Now I'll turn it over to student reports.
So right now at Westbrook High School, fall sports, they're occurring. Spirit Week is the week of the 24th, along with Homecoming Saturday, the 29th. There's going to be a marching show at Walton Field in Auburn on the 15th. Along with that, there is a there's going to be a Seeds of Peace meeting on the 18th in the morning. Youth Court begins tomorrow during ACE period for this new coming year, and new members are welcomed. The Telling Room will be visiting the high school this coming week. And in the works right now at the high school, we're trying to plan a presentation to get students involved with CIEE, Council on International Education Exchange, which I was fortunate to do this past summer. The Olympia Snow Women's Leadership Institute will have its first kickoff for the new sophomore girls beginning the 27th. The Drama Club starts and auditions for the new play called Clue on the 17th. Along with that, NHS will be running the blood drive at Westbrook High School on October 11th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. And free SAT prep classes are being offered to students beginning September 24th at Dearing High School for the first time as well. The Youth Leadership Coalition began today during ACE, and efforts are being made right now to have a climate and culture summit at the school in this coming school year, and it's hoping to be planned by Seeds of Peace right now.
And so over at the Vocational Center, there are eight Tech One programs that are full with several on the waitlist. This will be the last week for adds slash drops over at the Vocational Center, and open house for the Voke is on Tuesday, October 2nd from 6:00 to 7:00, and that's it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Lancia.
Thank you, Mr. Violet, and welcome, Gracia. Welcome back, Chance. Congratulations on being a senior. We have remarkable students in our district, and we have wonderful representation from them every day in our community, and thank you for joining the school committee. I would also like to congratulate two other students who are serving as city council representatives, student representatives to the city council. We have Sadie Cross and Zanib Almatwari. They were just elected, or they just joined the city council this past Monday, so congratulations to both of them. Our students represent us, and they represent their students, their peers very well, so welcome. We've started another school year. We're back in session, we're back in full swings, just like we never left. We have 2,519 students in our district right now. That represents about 17% of our students are considered English language learners, 18% are considered special education students, receiving services both in our school as well as in special purpose programs. We have 49 pre-K students in our program at the community center, and 14 of our students are considered homeless at the moment. This continues to demonstrate our very diverse tapestry here in our district, and we're very excited to start this new school year with such a great diverse population. Special welcome to any new students and families who have come to our community. We have had over 100 new registrants over the course of the summer, as well as students moving out of the district. But if you are new to our community, if you've just moved to Westbrook as a student, as a community member, welcome, and please participate in your schools. Come to our schools, visit with us, volunteer with us. We look forward to serving you. In your packets and published tomorrow in Thursday folders and on the website is the monthly teaching and learning newsletter. If you've never seen that before, I encourage you to read that once a month. It's something that I publish monthly, giving information about the schools, giving information for parents about different programs that we have, celebrating the work that we're doing, as well as some reminders of different things. So please make sure you get a copy of that. If you'd like a paper copy sent to you, please contact my office. We'd be happy to do that, or you can find it online or in the Thursday folders. A few things I would like to highlight, some things that have gone on recently here in the community at the start of the school year. As you know, we have an organization or a coalition in our district called One Westbrook, and that's a group of folks who are working to promote our inclusivity within the school community as well as within the greater Westbrook community. One of the subcommittees of the One Westbrook Initiative is has to do with parent voice and parent engagement, which is a topic near and dear to my heart and to all of our hearts here in the district, as it is one of our strategic goals. There was a community conversation held at a parent's home last week, and there were 10 parents present at this meeting, which was a great turnout. It was filling this parent's home with lots of people, lots of people for whom English is not their first language. So we're very happy to engage with the community and to talk about school. And thank you to the other school leaders who were part of that conversation. Thank you to the parent who hosted that meeting and provided us with a delicious feast as well. And that's the first of many of these conversations that we'll be having in our community. So thank you, especially to Regina Phillips, our community engagement coordinator who organized that. I'd like to congratulate Niagua Bayak, who has been named the Gatorade Player of the Year. Niagua is quite an athlete and has won a number of competitions and won a number of recognitions. This is another terrific recognition for her. I'd like to thank the Saco Bedford Savings Bank for their donation to our food pantries. They donated $250 for our high school pantry. And I'd also like to thank Veronica Bates, who serves on our school committee, as well as folks with the Westbrook Rotary and the Westbrook Kiwanis, who are forming a food pantry at our middle school as well. We now have the Falcon's Nest at the middle school, where we provide food, as well as clothes and supplies, hygiene supplies, school supplies for our students who need them. Thank you to the Locker Project, who will be providing the food for that starting in October. But a special thanks to the members of the community who have filled in the blanks during the months of August and September by donating tons and tons of food so that we can start the year off right at that food pantry. But thank you to all the folks in the community who have established the one at the middle school this year, as well as the one that's been longstanding at our high school. Special thanks to Amy, and I've lost Amy's last name, Lori.
Boucher.
Amy Boucher, I apologize, Amy, who is spearheading the work at the middle school. I'd like to announce that we've received the fourth year of our Drug-Free Communities Grant of $125,000. That continues the work of our Communities That Care Program, our Drug-Free Schools and Communities work that we're doing. Thank you very much to Alex Hughes and Joanna Albanese and their steering committee, and all the people connected with the DFC Grant and the projects of Communities That Care. I'd also like to thank TD Bank for their donation of hygiene products. Every year, the TD Bank organizes a drive for different supplies, soap and deodorant and personal products, and they've donated those to our schools this year. So thank you to the folks at the TD Bank. I would like to mention something that will give you more information about probably at our next meeting, but we are very fortunate. There's a benefactor in our community who has reached out to one of our board members, Mrs. Joyce, as well as to me, and to Katie Garrity, our homeless coordinator, about initiating a foundation to support homelessness in our community, homeless students in our community. Over the last two years, we've seen the number of students who are homeless increase dramatically, and we want to make sure that they're well taken care of. In the moment, when there's a crisis situation, as well as making sure that they are well taken care of throughout the time that they may be experiencing homelessness, either on their own, if they're a teenager on their own, or if they're with their families. So we are working with this benefactor who chooses to remain anonymous and working out some details of how we might establish this foundation. Once that is ready to be presented, we'll present that to the school committee because you have to receive that gift, and then we would be able to start supporting the students who need those kinds of services in our community. So thank you to that anonymous donor benefactor in our community and to the folks who've been working with that initiative. And thank you, Mrs. Joyce, for being part of those conversations. On Friday of this week, we have a special event happening at our middle school. If you recall, a few summers ago, one of our summer focus classes had a project to create a sign and to really trace the history of the Cumberland Oxford Canal, which runs behind our middle school, for which the canal school is named. They researched the history and the economy that was associated with the canal, and over the course of that summer, and then into another project during the school year through our innovative grants program, they were able to build a sign that they will be installing on the trail that runs behind the high school at the canal this Friday. So if you're available, come over to the middle school, 2 o'clock Friday afternoon to celebrate the unveiling. It'll be a quick unveil because it's right at the end of our school day, but really thank you and congratulations to the students who were involved and to the staff who were involved, Steve Mullen, Sharon Trace, and Julie McCabe, who are three of our middle school teachers who worked with their students to research the history, to create the sign, and to install it for the entire community, to learn about the proud history of the Cumberland Oxford Canal, as well as our local history. I'd like to recognize and thank our city council for agreeing to place a question on the fall on the November ballot, having to do with the Regional Service Centers Initiative that we've been talking about at the school committee for several months. There will be a question on the ballot, asking the people of the community if they agree for Westbrook schools to participate in a regional service center with the other schools in the Greater Sebago Education Alliance, which are our typical partners of Gorham, Scarborough Bonny Eagle, and Wyndham Raymond, as well as schools in Portland, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, Brunswick, and Great Gloucester. Part of the regulation, part of the legislation for this initiative requests two things. One, the approval of the governing board, which the school committee granted back in June, and the second is the approval of the voters in the community. And if you do recall, if we join this regional service center, we are able to retain our full state funding. If we do not join that service center, we would see a $56,000 reduction in funding this year, and more of that next year, about $114,000 reduction next year. So we'll be providing more information about the regional service center. It's an exciting opportunity to share services, to work toward efficiencies, to work toward collaborations in the greater Westbrook area, the greater Sebago Alliance area, and we'll be able to give more information at some community events, as well as through newsletters and information sessions. And that is all that I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lancia. Oh, I apologize. I skipped the first public participation, so I'll jump back up to that. We are at public participation where anybody can speak on any agenda item for three minutes. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mike?
Nothing at this time.
Veronica?
Yes, the Finance Committee met this last Wednesday, and we discussed a couple of things that are on your agenda this evening, one of which is the Odyssey software for special education. We also discussed increasing a part-time teacher's hours. We discussed what Peter went over, the food pantry at the middle school, and the donation from Saco Bedford Savings. Went over the Drug-Free Communities Grant. We did a building project update. So far, we're doing well. We're well within budget. And if you haven't already noticed or driven by, the Westbrook Middle School is about, what, 98 to 99% finished? They're just working on a punch list and some decorative details outside above the window. And Sakarapa is doing really good. We just actually had a tour of the building this evening, and it's coming along wonderfully. It's going to look gorgeous. You'll definitely want to go through there when it's done. We went over some updates on the geothermal system at the Westbrook Middle School, some of the issues that we're having, and some repair work that we're having done. And we went over some of the areas of the budget that we went over in last year, and went over some ideas on how to minimize that impact this year so that we don't go over in those call centers. And we also went over the request to hire the new EdTech 3, which is on the agenda. That's it tonight.
Thank you. Sue?
We haven't had a meeting yet, but we are going to have a meeting on September 24th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Steve?
Nothing at this time.
Norine?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. 12.1.1, special ed teacher at canal school. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Sue, seconded by Steve. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.1.2, grade six teacher, one year only at the Westbrook Middle School. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Sue. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Yes, Sue?
Just have a question. Why is this one year only?
This is an enrollment-based position. If you recall, there was a one-year-only teacher in fourth grade, one-year-only teacher in fifth grade. This is tracking a bubble of students.
Oh, okay. Right, thank you. But I have a quick question, too.
Yep.
So, but we're hiring two.
Yes.
We need to.
Because it's a big bubble.
Okay.
There's a large number of sixth graders.
All right, all right, thank you.
Your enrollment will be up in a couple of years.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, it's been moved by Mike, seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.1.3, grade six teacher, one year only at Westbrook Middle School. What are the wishes of the committee? Been moved by Veronica, seconded by Steve. Questions or comments from members of the public? I mean, the committee, excuse me. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.1.4, guidance counselor at the Westbrook High School. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Mike. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.1.5, adult ed technical education coordinator. What are the wishes of the committee? Been moved by Mike, seconded by Veronica. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.2, request to approve storage shed for music department to be installed at the side of a practice field. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Odilia, seconded by Veronica. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Yes. Norine?
Where are the other practice fields that are going to be stored, and who's going to maintain it?
If I may, may I ask, Mrs. Prue?
Would you prefer that I come to the podium?
Yes, I know. If your mic is working, that's fine.
I think it is. Hi, the structure is intended to be maintained in perpetuity by the music boosters. It's going to be located up near the scaffolding that is in that practice field and close to the electrical access.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Veronica?
And through you, too, Ms. Prue, will this be purchased through booster funding?
It is a booster funding process, and they are fully prepared to fund this. There is a question of perhaps securing some grant money for this, and that would be a matching grant situation. But yes, the boosters are committed to assuming the funding. So it would be of no expense to the school system itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Let me say that again. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.3, request to approve the hiring of an EdTech 3 in alternative learning program at Westbrook High School. This is funded through a Title IV grant. Action item, first approval. It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Norine. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.4, request to purchase the Odyssey Ware software. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Mike. Questions or comments from members? Yes, Sue?
What is the price on this?
The price of that is $20,000.
Can you explain a little more on the software?
Sure. If I might ask Kate Hersam, who's our director of intervention, to give us a quick synopsis of that.
The software has three purposes. It's, one, an intervention software where NWA results can be directly uploaded into it, and like at the middle school, it's going to be used in math and reading labs for targeted kind of focus on certain standards for those students. At the high school, the second purpose is course replacement, so it offers all content areas, including visual and performing arts, physical education. And this is intended to be used in alternative settings like supportive learning program and for students who have had long gaps in kind of being in school from being incarcerated or hospitalized, out of the country, a whole bunch of different reasons. The third use of it is it has a social-emotional learning curriculum that's based on the CASL standards. These, all these, this is a one-year-only kind of pilot to see how successful we can be in all three uses of that software.
Thank you. And that is being funded through a grant, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And is that a one-time cost, or is that the yearly subscription cost if we were to decide to go forward?
It would be a renewal subscription cost going forward.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none. It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. 12.5, request to expand part-time teaching at Westbrook High School from 57% to 62.5%. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Norine. And just real quick, I'll give a little explanation. We have a teacher who's part-time. Really, the hours and commitment of her work schedule haven't been reviewed. You know, she has increased her time. And again, after doing a review, it was recommended that, you know, Kelly and the high school come and ask. In your packet, you did receive a letter from the president of the WEA. You know, usually when we have these types of situations, we need to make sure that the association gives thumbs up. The association didn't have a problem. Like I said, we just passed that letter from the president of the association to you this evening, and they're okay with it. So again, because of the more obligations and duties, it increased the percentage that she's here, which is the request for the additional pay. Does that do all right, Kelly?
It's all right.
Okay. So any questions? No questions? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That is seven in favor, none opposed. Important date, September 13th at 5:30. We have a grade six through eight open house at the middle school. September 19th at 5:00 p.m., Ed Programs Committee meeting at Central Office. September 24th at 5:00 p.m., the Policy Committee meeting at Central Office. October 2nd at 6:00 p.m., WRVC, open house at WRVC. The 5th is a professional development for staff. There will be no school for students.
It should be October 3rd for Finance.
October 3rd is Finance Committee meeting. Thank you very much. And that would be Central Office at 6:00. October 5th at 6:00 p.m., you have, oh, that's the Finance, that's the 3rd, sorry. October 8th is Columbus Day. There's no school. Central Office will be closed. October 10th at 7:00 p.m. is a school committee meeting here in room 114. October 17th at 5:00 p.m. is the Ed Programs Committee meeting at Central Office. And October, whoa, I thought your meeting was September, Sue?
It is. We have two.
Okay. Ed programs, is that September also?
No, that's October.
That's October.
But your Ed programs is September.
And Policy.
Policy, I mean.
Policy is September.
September, so it's not October.
And it's also 6:00.
There's a Policy meeting in September and October.
Oh, okay, all right. October, okay.
And September 24th is 6:00.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
Needs to be changed.
That's the 24th, so that needs to be changed?
To 6:00.
Okay.
6:00.
All right, thank you. We are at our public, second public participation, where anybody can speak on any school-related matter for three minutes. Is there anybody from the public that would wish Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak? Seeing none. Any announcements? Sue?
Just a couple things. One, I probably should have brought this up during the minutes, but I must have been sleeping, so I apologize. No, Marcy Blaze, and you don't have to get back to me right now, but she said she'd been hired as an administrative assistant for the middle school, replacing Joanne Eldridge, but it's my understanding she didn't take that guidance secretary position. So, just if I can get an explanation on that. And then, and then also, I know it's been a long day for everyone. You know, we had the walk at Sakarapa, and then we had a workshop for the proficiency-based learning, the Howls, at 5:00. And I just want to thank Blair Morelli and Kelly DeVoe and Laurie Wood. It's a long day, and that proficiency-based learning, you know, I'm a little slow and been trying to really tackle that, and I really appreciate the time on that, because it definitely is the question of the hour when it comes to the parents. You know, everyone is trying to understand this, and, you know, we're actually a leader in this, which is great. We're out there, but at the same time, we have a lot of questions, and I do really appreciate that you guys have stayed on top of this, and, you know, Jim, that you're getting these workshops, and we're, you're helping us, guide us. So thank you very much.
Any other announcements?
Yes, just one last thing. We will be holding a building committee meeting for the construction project, which is now just going to be Sakarapa Schools' construction project. Which is very exciting.
It's just cool, it is a little happy.
Yes, our work at the middle school is 90-some-odd percent complete, and we're just waiting on a punch list. It's gorgeous. It's a really phenomenal addition to that school, and the work at Sakarapa is continuing. But that building committee meeting will be, I believe, September 26th.
Six.
6:00 at Sakarapa School. We'll send out more information about that. And just one quick word of thanks, I should have mentioned this in my report. Thank you so much to the staff of both the middle school and of Sakarapa School, to the families, to the students, to Brian and to Laurie and their staffs. The transition into school this year was hot and difficult for everyone, but especially at two schools that were just completing construction or undergoing construction. Thank you for all of the hard work that you've done in making a smooth transition, and we're really seeing some absolutely beautiful results at both places.
Good. A motion, yes, has been moved by Veronica, seconded by Noreen. All those in favor? We are adjourned.